Four.
Right.
Yes, okay, I'd like to call. The special meeting of the Dover Town Select Board to order at six P M on Wednesday, February.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seventh. And. We are going to go over the town meeting morning.
So, thank you, everybody for coming. I'm really excited for next week. Somebody asked me once, what is my favorite position in town? And I said, I love the moderator because I love town meeting. Because it's the last true democracy. Anywhere and you know, you can actually come in here and you can make changes and you get to voice your opinion and it's your vote that counts. So, thank you for coming. I think too Dover, do we know of any other town that does like a pre-town meetings? Do they? Is it pretty much just us? Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, they do have them, okay. I. Okay. Randy, I only read the back section. That's the best section. It's got the comics and it's got the crossword. No, I'm way over that. It's Mike's job now. But anyways, I remember back when we used to have it at the school, there'd be more people almost for pre-town meeting and it would be pretty packed. And there was a lot of changes that got made to the town meeting or a lot of information that was requested. But you know lately, the select board has done a great job of being prepared for you all. So, we're going to run through this and this is an informal thing. When we have town meeting, I am going to ask again, like we have the last couple of years. If you guys by unanimous consent. Or by consent would be good with usually the rules are is those who make the motion get to ask the first question and I've always thrown in whoever seconds get the second. A few years ago, it was suggested that maybe we allow something to speak to it first. Who's ever presenting the article, be it the select board or be of the Valley Rescue, then they help you phrase a question if you want to. So, we'll be asking for that. Andrew will also be running one of his infamous elections. Next week too, right out back there. We're not allowed to speak about candidates during the election when you're voting back there. We did find out you can speak about articles, but I don't think there's any articles being voted on. I am. It's unfortunate to say, but it's fortunate for those who want the position that there's no contested races this year. As a matter of fact. They'll be looking for a write-in. Or a which one is not?
So, it's the library trustee for five years. Nobody will be named on the ballot, nobody submitted candidate petition. If a writing candidate receives. At least. The number of votes required for a petition to get your name on the ballot, which I believe is fourteen right now. One percent of the voters, that person would be elected to that op. So, if somebody wanted to write it, they run a writing campaign. Likely they could.
So, just so you all know, it's McDivitt, M C. So, capital D, I'm sorry, but I think Andy, you would accept the small d, right? Just because of him. So anyways, fifteen of you want to write his name and he'll hate me for the rest of my life. So, we're not, we usually people are, if there's contested races, we usually ask for people, yeah, people to speak. Vicky did inform me, there is a little flip-flopping going on on that old select board though. I guess. Sarah had been the two-year candidate and Dan had been the three-year and this year they're switching. They're still both running. But they're just switching the position they're running for. So, don't get confused. Is there any questions on on the candidates or? Hey, so first article, this is a pretty easy one and this is where we get to practice raising our hands. Shall the voters accept the end report of the auditors and the other town officers? So, the reports are your town report. So, this is a chance where you get to make a motion to. To accept and then you have a second and then we have any discussion and then we have a vote. Is everybody good with that? So, that's kind of your warm-up. So, here's a good one. So, the voters compensate town officers as follows. Select board chair, three thousand dollars, annual stipend. Select board members, a twenty-five hundred dollar annual stipend. Town treasurer, five thousand dollars annual stipend, town clerk, seventy-six thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Town auditors, twenty-one dollars and forty cents. All others, chairman Vermont, minimum wage plus a buck fifty, members Vermont, minimum wage. And mileage based on the federal reimbursement rate for the month in which the mileage occurred. Anybody, we're going to let the select board just kind of run you through that real quick and if there's any questions, we'll entertain them.
In general, salaries are up five percent this year. That's up from what we offered last year. So, we. Except for shouldn't is the highway department, which we'll explain when we get to the highway budget.
Any questions? So, Vicky made a really good point. We have to keep the questions appropriate to the article. So, you can't ask a question about, well, you know, shouldn't we pay? The transfer station attendant more or less or whatever. It's got to be. In, it's got to be about what the article is, is written. Article four, shall the voters authorize general fund expenditures for operational expenses? Of two million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. And thirty cents for the coming year. So, again, we'll ask the select board for a little background and then we'll go to questions.
The but that operational budget starts on page twenty-four. Actually, ends on, no, yep, start on twenty-four. So, the operational budget also contains. The appropriations that are at the la- on the last page of the operational budget, which is on page thirty-two. Yes, and. A lot of these. On page thirty-two are individual articles and they will be voted on. And will add to the total amount of the budget if they are approved.
You all set?
Yep, and so if all those articles are approved. The operational budget will be up. Five point nine percent.
Okay, so are there any questions for the board? Everybody understands it's some some appropriations are voted on as a separate article and some are included in the budget, correct? Go ahead, sir.
What would be cost drivers?
Wages, health insurance. A lot of services. Fuel, things like that. Again, it doesn't include highway, which that's also highly impacted.
Are there any other questions? This is your time to test them. Guys are doing really good. So, the voters authorize. Oh, I'm sorry.
Travis, do you want to speak to that? So, mixed solid waste is almost double. With is not, no, sorry, single stream recycling is almost double what mixed solid waste is right now. So, because there's not much of a market for much of it. So, Travis is.
Either the current board should people out trucking costs back or we could make this current board is up, it has gone up. Every month last week. So.
So. I'll go to him and then you. So. You all set, Travis? So, I think Scott and Sarah wanted to say something too.
Well, I was actually just going to mention, say like, you know, we're we're doing the cardboard thing. That was it. I just want to make sure we mentioned that, that we're trying to make efforts to bring that down. Just be informing the public eventually and.
Wow, you really want to piss off A and R, don't you? So, folks, Sarah.
It's kind of not said, but by pulling the cardboard out of the single stream, we're going to have a smaller volume going into single stream. And then what we pull out could potentially even break even or even bring us in a little bit of revenue. But that isn't reflected in these numbers right now.
But that's also been historical too, because there's been times when you could, you know, wind them solid waste. She used to be making almost her operating budget on re-selling recyclables and then. The market got flooded. We don't send to certain countries and then that drops demand and. It's always fluctuating when they first started recycling. Remember Paul Mendelson, you know, was complaining because it got more expensive to recycle than it was to ship it as trash. But the board felt to be do the do the ecological thing. It was very important to still recycle and keep people used to it. So. Unfortunately, it sometimes costs to be green. Everybody good? Good discussion on that, folks. Is there any other questions? On the. Oh, so sorry. Is there any other questions on on the budget item? If not, we'll move on to Article Six. Yes.
Just form a gathering next week and we should ask people to identify through the yard.
Thank you. I I wasn't going to quite be that formal. Because I was going to talk. I'm sorry, we're in Article Six. Article Five, I mean, I'm sorry. So, the voters authorize highway fund. Expenditures for operational expenses. Of four of for the. Operational expenses for the. Operational expenses of. One million, eight hundred, two thousand, nine hundred, twenty-six dollars and forty-seven cents for the coming year. That doesn't read right.
Okay, so the highway expenses are on pages thirty-two, three and thirty-four. As I mentioned before. The highway is the one area where we felt we needed to. Put additional money. In salaries due to our attrition we'd been having of. Highway crew. And so, the highway department. Is being given a dollar plus five percent. So, they and. In an effort to try to stabilize our workforce and make sure we have enough crew. It's really critical for us. So, and in the. Another development is that Travis, on his own, became a C D L. Certified instructor. And so, we can do all the C D L training. In-house and they they just have to take their road test. Am I right on that?
Well, hey, Jerry, hey, how? You said?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. See, Randy, I did it.
I noticed in the highway roads that the percentage of change will stop in. All the line category. Is that because Travis simply because of the cost of supply? Is that the reason that it's gone up so much?
Yes. Some might have tried, tried to be conservative in the years. Past years. Couldn't do it anymore. Things were just getting slower. We're we're almost short on our supply. You know.
Okay, and the other question that I have, solar, the solar panels that we have at the council station, do they follow exactly?
You're not asked on board members, but I, they don't, I don't put them on as well.
No, they 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 do not.
So. Under Kylie Garage. It says Kylie. Well, before I get to that, what do they follow?
Because the town had already signed on the solar array at Dover School. When Greenlander came in to put this solar array on on the. Landfill, the capped landfill. We couldn't sign another agreement. That's the rules. We get an annual payment for rent.
Is that the fifty-eight hundred dollars?
It won't show.
Solar credit.
Okay, so the highway garage is is part of the Dover School. And so, all the town buildings were included in that.
So, that's fifty-eight hundred dollars is the credit.
Marco is the man with this electric credit.
He's still famous.
It's page thirty-four. The second hole.
So, that is after, after receiving credit, still pay fifty-eight hundred dollars. So, it would have been higher, but. That's an expense.
So, how much does it cost to heat the town garage in the recycling center? Electrically. If we get fifty-eight hundred dollars, how much are, how much more are we paying in addition to that?
We're paying fifty-eight hundred after the solar credit and then to heat the garage is about seventeen thousand.
I'm sorry?
To heat the garage is about seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand?
Yes, it's two lines.
You all set, Jerry?
Well, that's in addition to the credit again?
Correct.
So, it's costing us twenty-three, eight? Twenty-two, eight? We get the credit, five thousand, eight hundred.
So, we get a credit, so our electric bill gets whittled down. By something else. Fifty-eight hundred.
Fifty-eight.
And that doesn't include. It shouldn't include the transfer station because that is not part of highway. So, that was in the operation.
Jerry, you all set?
The electric isn't heat. The electric is not part of heat. So, you were putting the two together. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
So, just as a point of order kind of too, is at town meeting. You don't question people. You question the moderator. Moderator repeats it and you get one question and you know, follow up if it's germane to what you were asking. Right, that's why tonight it's very informal. Even though Randy said it'd be more formal next time we're live. Shall the voters raise and appropriate six hundred thousand for the capital paving fund under Article Six?
Sarah's going to do cap.
Sarah's going to do capital paving.
So, that's, we we try to level fund the capital, the different capital funds. So, we're asking for six hundred thousand, which is what we've gotten in past years and what we are projecting we're going to be asking for in the future. The paving expenses themselves, Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, but they've gone up a little bit and moved a lot of stuff around. For instance, Blue Brook Road is now. Going to be by the end of twenty-six, twenty-seven is going to be full paid. We're doing an additional approximately a half a month, half a mile each year of that's currently unpaid, will now be paid. We have. The South Access Road. Was going to get taken care of by the. The. Yeah, the Snow Lake Restoration, but that's going to be running much slower than we anticipated. So, that's going to have to get paved prior to when the project completes. And. There's a few shifts, but we but we're still basic, we're still going to end up with a surplus at the end of the year. It's going to be very small. With the six hundred dollars, six hundred thousand of people worship. I think so.
Any questions about Sarah's paving bloopers? Come watch it. It'll be a lot of fun. She'll be out there running the rakes and then roller and. No questions on paving? Holy mackerel. Okay. How about Article Seven, shall the voters raise and appropriate six hundred thousand dollars for the capital equipment fund? Which selectmen board is going to speak to that?
She's doing all the capital.
Oh, Sarah, do some more capital for us.
So, the capital. The capital equipment for highway is basically staying the same. Things have moved. In different. Categories. For instance. There were the twenty-eighteen Ford F-two-fifty is being replaced and it was. Fifty thousand, now it's sixty thousand, costs of vehicles are going up, so things have had to move around. And we again, we're asking for. Six hundred thousand appropriation. Last year we had estimated that was going to be six fifty. But we dropped it down to six hundred.
Last year we raised.
Last year we raised six, and we projected six fifty for this year as well, but we revised that downward and then we're looking at, we're projecting six fifty and we're after this year.
And those are, that is on page thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
So, does anybody have any questions on the capital equipment? Well, there are no questions. Let's go to Article Eight. So, the voters raise and appropriate one hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the capital building improvement fund.
So.
Age thirty-seven.
So. The. There's, there are things that have been moved around, but. And we're we're asking for, I believe we have. Projected. We had projected eight thousand. In the level funding and this year we're asking for one-twenty. We had a number of things come up.
You all set?
So, you may just run down some of the things we're thinking too.
Okay, so. The brick building, the twenty thousand for the floor and carpeting. And some of the ongoing mill expenses is that that twenty is actually a carryover. It wasn't all expended in twenty-three, twenty-four. The. Transfer station, that was overhead doors. Travis?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the retaining wall.
Yes.
Do you want, can?
So, we're going to do another overhead door at the transfer station, replace the last one that's in need of replacing. And the retaining wall is. We are going to add another foundation. Constantly changing alcohol on this in there. So, after we had exited the transfer station, we're going to put it to the right on it. Cover painting wall. Demolition boxes on site.
The the town garage. We're going to be doing new overhead doors this year and next year. We're just trying to happen half on that. The town office is going to be getting central air. Which we think is probably a good expenditure instead of multiple window. Units. The firehouse, we had originally planned. For the furnace and flooring and paint. There's a mold issue that has to be addressed. That's being done this year and then furnace flooring and paint are being moved into next year.
Okay. Is there any questions, answers, comments? So, as another, something that you all be very happy about. We, Andy, myself and Sarah went to, since Sarah's the River Valley. School moderator. We went to a class called Ruling the Ruling that they have every year. The gentleman's been doing it for forty years, forty-five years, long time. He says that we don't have to make you read the article anymore. That's what I took away from it. So. I will read the article. You can just make the motion. We can get a second. I'll repeat the article. Then we can have discussion. So, you won't have to be embarrassed to raise your hand to move something onto the floor because you won't have to read it. And you don't have to wait for the short ones that are coming up. The other thing, you know, is this will be interesting. This is the first time I can ever remember. We're going to have two of our main department heads. Have to get permission to speak because they aren't voters in town. So, we would ask the assembly if it's okay for them to speak. So, like what Travis just explained what he was doing, that would require the assembly to approve that. Nothing personal, Travis, or my family. But tonight you can speak freely. Without their approval. Any questions on on that, on the capital? Building stuff? Andy's probably very happy. He's going to have A C, but probably people upstairs even more so, like the selectmen when you have your meetings.
And the economic development part.
Oh, economic development too. Eric is begging you. He promises double to the to double our economic development if you get him here's A C. So, approve that article. Article Nine. You're another one that needs approval too. I thought you lived in Dover for some reason.
I'm both two.
No, I heard, I said Mike already. Article Nine, so the voters raise and appropriate two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars and no cents. For the Dover Free Library. Is there anybody from the library here to speak to that? Okay. She's probably ask her questions and if you folks know.
But Joe is the liaison.
You have some.
Sorry.
Yeah. I'm here for the library to. Have them sort of prepared for. I might not be able to answer your questions here, but. I can put some of your questions and relay them to the board, get answers for you at.
Okay. First of all, I have that we have a lawsuit in place. And town and has to pay for that. Is that correct?
I don't know if I can talk about that too much. Well, we have insurance for these purposes. How much that insurance is governed, I can't say. So, that's.
Okay, under H R A expense. It says that the library is asking twenty-seven, nine. Hey, can you explain to me? Can you explain to me exactly what an H R A's expense is? Why they're asking for that much since they've never asked anything?
So. The H R A's account is the same, kind of the same way our. Our H R A is we ask for the funds. We spend them out to employees, so where the employees at the town are very strict. They're everything paid for up to whatever the amount is. So, they just have to be putting that in this regular, was I supposed to speak to you?
No, no, you're doing good. Like, just when you're done, I just want to, Jerry, when you, when people ask a question on a specific line like that, it would really be helpful if you can just say what page you're looking at. So, everybody. I notice everybody's looking through their books for that and it would help Joe probably a lot.
I already. I've went through the budget with them. I've been to many meetings, so I understand. So, it probably wasn't explained out in the previous. It just was added in. It's just a, they're showing it better than it was.
And what is it used?
So, H R A, you have a high deductible. Health insurance.
Okay.
So, before we actually start using insurance, there's different higher. So.
On that same page, page seventy-seven. The library, library and resources, which is reading to staff development here, asking for. An increase here and asking for an increase of. Well, you want two thousand dollars. Last year you spent four hundred. So, what is that, that's used for staff development?
I would see that's training for the classes, training. I would say that I can get a better answer, but that's usually.
And online services are now forty-two hundred dollars where they were nothing the year before and the year before in the.
I I can't answer for that, but I guarantee you when they're here, they'll be able to answer that. I know that we used to be on a plan. That was a grant that might have gone out or something. I remember talking this back a couple. That was a grant that might have gone out or something, I remember talking this back a couple of months ago. So that you can ask to get better clarification, I cannot verify that.
Alright.
So it might have been that we were getting the uh Wi-Fi and. Now we have to pay for it, or what we were getting was not working properly, or this is better, so we had it available, so that's a good question for you that. Maybe it's something totally different than ask at town. Yes, and they will know. Yes.
Yeah. Jerry, I think if you really look at this. They've renamed a bunch of different things, cause down below fiber optics, it was a thousand and now it's zero, so I think that they've. Tried to be more specific on different things and, and tho- those are good questions to ask, um but.
Well, no, you should ask them now, cause Joe, that way.
So far, you had made. Three.
Yes.
There is so. Um and the cleaning increased double. The cleaning bill now is six thousand dollars, it's seventy thousand.
Uh. Yeah.
Really?
Nice.
But it did, it did go.
Went from a thousand eighty to thirty two fifty. Correct?
No, last year.
In cleaning?
Cleaning.
I think.
Oh, no.
Fifty three twenty one line item.
Yeah. Professional services. I'm talking about cleaning, which is fifty three fourteen. It went from eight to, from a thousand to three thousand.
Right.
Okay. Um. And then the, the last one is line item fifty three twenty one. And I didn't, I'm not sure exactly what this means, it says honorary and professional services. And then parentheses, it says rename professional services. And they're, and they're doubling the amount of money they want to six thousand, and I'm not sure what they want to use that.
Okay, so sure those specific questions, like Vicki's folks. I know that they changed out some things, I know that one thing that is a good increase. Is our inter libraries exchange.
Okay.
If you ask for a book, so that might be, if you know something's went up, so if you wanted a book that we didn't have, it's an inter library. I'm not gonna comment on that in this meeting right now. Alright, so anyways, you did what we did. And because I don't wanna go anything.
Alright.
Alright, if you wanna ask me outside, I'm more than welcome to talk to you, okay? So what it is, is it's exchange. Prepare service fees and it works, if we did not really have. Okay, it's all access.
Thank you.
So we're actually looking because people utilize it. We're actually using, we do it a weekly, we're actually looking to do it by week, so people can get books quicker, we can get books back quicker. So it's actually one of the more bigger services that. So anything that's being new, when I was at meetings, I said that was the thing that we should be spending money on, so people are using the light.
Yes, you'll set Gary.
Yeah.
Okay, so you all set?
So bring it up, they'll have all the. Better explain.
Are there any other questions about the library? Okay, hearing done. Article ten, shall the voters raise and appropriate thirty thousand dollars for Deerfield Valley Rescue Inc. I think I saw a note somewhere that they will have somebody here this year.
They're going to try.
Yeah.
If, if they're not on call.
Right. Last year, oh, I'm sorry.
That's cool. Um alright, yeah, I have the layup, I have the easy ones to do. Uh, this is the. Uh I think, you know. This speaks for itself, I like the, if you look at page one oh four, it's got the numbers, there was two hu- two hundred and forty. Responses in Dover, when you think about that, it's, you know. Almost every other day they're out here, um. If you've been unfortunate enough to have to call them, you've been fortunate enough that you can, and they've been there to respond, so um. I think one of the things that, that they stressed when they spoke to us is that the. Volunteers that they used to get. They, you see a lot more volunteers, the, I don't know if it's like the requirements for the volunteers, or it's just that. Where there's not as many people out there, so if you know someone. Or you're interested, will volunteer, I don't know the requirements for it, but um I know they do staff it. Twenty four seven, there's, there's people there, um so it like everything else. The cost of gas, you know, fuel, whatever, those that, that went up, um. So that was the reason for increase, they did increase the amounts for Wilmington, Whitingham. And, and us, and so.
That's all they. Uh. They, um the requests that they're making this year are Wilmington and Dover thirty thousand. Halifax and Whitingham and twenty thousand, Marlboro five, Searsburg and Stratton two each.
And um they came to our last select board meeting last week. Which the video's out on YouTube and they explain the situation, they have one volunteer from Dover. So.
I think in, in the newspaper, it said that um that's why they pulled the ambulance out, they were hoping to get more volunteers in Dover and. They never did, so we used to have an ambulance in the firehouse in West Dover and we don't anymore. Any questions for Scott, don't, somebody throw him a hard one. You got a question?
One oh four. Yeah, it's going down, it's like a hard graphic, it says sixty one thousand nine seven six three hundred forty five. No, it's seven hundred. It's probably just sixty five thousand.
Okay, but it's not gonna make a difference on the article, I'd be more concerned on a typo in the article. Any, any other thoughts on? Anybody wanna try to strike Scott out? You're there, you made it buddy, you hit a home run.
Got the easy ones this time.
Hey, guess what, in the next one, we got another person here to speak to. Article eleven, shall the voters raise and appropriate twenty five thousand for support and services at home, S A S. And Scott's gonna handle this one too.
Sure, I, I can, I can uh.
You can start for.
I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll start it up once again, and we have Becky here, I, do you, would you rather, Sarah, would you? Perfect, alright, good, cause I have notes, no, alright, uh once, page one oh one and one oh two. Um. Like I said, they gave me the layups here, uh. It's kinda says it, it outlines all the different services they offer here, uh Butterfield Commons. This is something where, you know, they're focusing on a lot of preventative care. Uh helping the elderly, making sure that, you know, uh we're welcome, welcoming and you can age in Dover and you can stay in Dover and there's those services there. Uh they have regular check-ins, and then if you go to the page one oh two, it just highlights all the specifics for what they've done for Dover. Um there's not currently a waitlist that kind of, I understand, just kind of. Sometimes there's a waitlist, sometimes there's not, there's two openings right now. And September fourteenth. Is gonna be a big day, cause that's gonna be ten years that it's been in operation, so um. And also another fe- uh feather in, in Becky's cap, she's a supervisor of. The health community workers and she took advantage of a grant to actually get uh both of her. All of her workers to be community health workers as well, and then using the state funds. Um so they're trained in that, so they're here, there's the skin, there's the. Blood pressure, lung and splenics and it helped fifty six Dover residents. And then uh as well as eleven didn't qualify, but they're still able to help them out and house checks and all that stuff. How'd I do?
You did good.
Alright.
A Panama Jack for y'all.
Thank you, I need that.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
That's impressive.
And that's um seventy nine. There's at least five others that I see that. Sam, we are from the same.
And I gotta tell you, every town meeting will have different, will stand up and say how wonderful Becky was, and she's helped our family. Um I don't, I don't know if there's a family who's been in Dover for several years that, that hasn't received some sort of support from Becky, so. We're very glad that you're here to help us out. And you do good at it. And, and Scott did really good. Any other questions for Becky? Don't grill her, but you can grill Scott. Okay, cool, I like love fest. Article twelve, shall the voters raise and appropriate twenty thousand dollars for the his, the Dover Historical Society, I didn't put historical before Dover.
I'll be Dan.
That's me.
That's coffee name.
Yeah.
So we have two issues that we have to work on at the Historical Society in time for. Construction, first one being the windows, we sent someone to clean the windows. And that charge was eight dollars, because the windows were so. Uh unglazed, falling apart and so forth. So we said the windows are not worth trying to fix. So we put in the book to renew by Anderson, who came in with roughly twenty windows that we were gonna change. And they said it'd be a hundred thousand dollars, but we'll give you a break and we'll give you eighty thousand, which is four thousand dollars a window. So I said thank you very much, that's a ridiculous price space for these windows. Went to Home Depot, put down a deposit on the windows for fifteen thousand dollars, paying the tinted front, or install them for five thousand. So soon as the weather changes, we'll do that. Second thing is we have a problem with seniors trying to get downstairs to see all the displays. Cause the staircase is very narrow and steep. So we have been planning to put a uh concrete uh set of steps on the side of the buildings. A little bit more A B A-ish, you could say that, but. Kind of seat there, and uh we went to washfront and we already ordered a set of concrete steps that's uh. I think it was very big, uh Swiss Alps, we'll do the excavating, we'll put the steps with railings along the side. So people could get downstairs instead of a, you know. Twenty eight inch steps, it would be like maybe six inches with railings on both sides. So that's the second chapter from that. And along with that, we still have um Taylor Friend doing the landscaping. Uh Peter Verdoux doing the plowing and the landscaping around his place. And we also have to continue with the painting of it for last year, because we'll have all our tears. On weekends, they're heading over time, so we really didn't have much of a chance to do that, but we'll catch up on that.
You all set there? Okay, anybody wanna try striking Dan out? Go ahead.
Yes, I heard you um thought about what you would do with the old windows. Um I know in Arlington, the Historical Society had a ra- uh uh auction, residents could paint the windows. And they actually did very well, like several years ago. So I'm just wondering if you.
These windows were put in nineteen ninety five. At our radical moment. Hmm. That's still windows. It's not at all. That they should. Yeah, at the time they did a great job, but you know, windows don't die, they're not gonna last a long time. And the storm windows, they're not, you know, uh double pan windows, so they're not really energy efficient. And if you pull one of the windows off, you can see this much space in between, because the windows that were there before had to close in the ways. Nobody filled in the area that it's sticking some insulation and so. It was really a cop job at the time. So I would love to do that, did that in my house. My house, I took the windows out, that were, you know, a hundred fifty years old, I brought them down to the restoration place. And they said we got plenty of windows. I wasted my time trying to do it.
I'll take them.
Too fast.
You all set?
I just was, completely forgot, windows. These are all new windows in here, you can open them, you can close them.
Stay open?
Yes, they don't, they don't fall in, so these were, and these were done by Home Depot. So, yeah.
So am I.
So. It, it's really funny that you brought that up, so I can remember when we used to be at the school. And Jimmy Fernat was a local contractor, and he always had something wise to say, and. Roscoe's mom, your mother-in-law, was saying, talking about the Harris House and stuff they were doing, and he said. You fools, he says, there's nothing historic left about that, you replaced everything and you didn't use the right materials, so it's kinda funny that you mentioned that. Remember that? He was sitting in the back, I think that's a. So um. But if anybody does have old windows, I'm looking to put some in my barn because a bunch of those broke, so. If you do have old double hung windows with pegs in them, I'd love them. Um, my last, I can't say that next week handy, but I can say it now. Um so the next article, Article thirteen is um. Shall the voters raise and appropriate three thousand three hundred and seventy two dollars for southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategy, SEVITS activities?
So usually somebody that's from SEVITS to tens, this is exactly the same number we, we've been paying for years, they have not adjusted our number up based on our new census. So we're still at the twenty ten census, so I'm, I'm grateful of that, um it should be up. You know, we went from a thousand to seventeen hundred basically, so we should be paying, but they haven't done.
So they probably haven't adjusted anybody, cause when they first sold it to us, they said that it was so much per person based on census, so.
And it's, yeah, it's three dollars per person.
Yeah. Are there any questions for the SEVITS person who's sitting right there, but they're trying to be invisible? The invisible SEVITS? Okay, hey, it's also too, if you look on the bottom of page seven where we are. Are those before the new windows or after the new windows? Cause it looks very bright. Lot brighter than it is tonight. Is it?
It looks like the Christmas tree from this year.
Yeah. It's only snow, snow, so that's probably.
It is actually a very nice picture. And, and this is a neat building, but how did you, isn't this a historical building, how do we get away with not, with not doing real windows?
We already messed it up.
Messed it up?
Mm-hmm.
That's stupid. Um. Okay, the next article, Article fourteen. Shall the voters exempt the property, the Eastover Volunteer Fire Company Inc. from property taxes for five years in accordance with B S A title. Thirty two, section thirty eight, forty. Who's squeaking around?
We do, we have to just do this every five years. Yeah, it's on the, it's on the warning every five years.
The town used to exempt a lot of properties back in the day, and then Act sixty said, oh wait, there's a statewide property tax. So you can't exempt stuff, so they, they made an, an exception for. For I believe fire departments and rescue squads, but like if we had a, a V F W here, you couldn't do that. And I think you can do it every year or up to five years, but they don't. And the town's always been very supportive. Any questions?
What's statute, statute say?
Well, you can go read it, it's if you turn on your phone and you hit Vermont statutes annotated. I don't remember, it's by, but I'm pretty, I remember it came in around the time of Act sixty. Cause there was a lot of discussion, cause we used to exempt multiple properties. Are you gonna read it to us when you find it? Okay, thank you. Article fifteen, shall the voters authorize the select board. To apply any surplus from the current fiscal year to reduce taxes in the next fiscal year. So do you wanna?
Every year, I mean, we try to, if there's money left over that makes sense, we take the tax rate down. If.
I did ask them to give it to the moderator one time, but they didn't fly either. Wanna share it, maybe if we ask, you and I ask to go. Um Article sixteen, shall the voters authorize the select board to sell properties which a town has acquired by gift or through tax sales? Hasn't been a tax in a while, has it?
No, we had a small one.
Oh.
It didn't happen, right?
Yes, sir.
We only had four, we only had four to begin with.
Okay, ahead, and then Joe.
But.
No, let her go and then you go, go ahead Jerry.
And I don't remember these, and I've. If you were to, I understand that most of the property that you get is through tax sales, you're probably not gonna get a gift of ninety acres. But if you were to get a gift of ninety acres. Or fifty acres, how would you go about deciding what to do with that, it might be used for o- open space? Would you seek the professional advice of, of people who know about the kinds of birds that need that, et cetera, et cetera? What would, how would you handle it?
I'm sure that we would call in. Professionals to, to help us, depending on what it was, obviously, if it was a. Uh a parking lot, that'd be something else, but, and we would also get the input, input from the voters, I, we think that that's important that. Um we would wanted, we would make everybody know what, what we were thinking or not thinking of doing with it. So it's, it, it mostly happens with tax sales, that gives us the ability to sell property at tax sale.
But be, be something that you would. Put on the agenda for your select board so that the. Put on the agenda for your select board so that the public could have a chance to take a look at it?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
And, and I do remember a long time ago, the town was given some land and it was because the people didn't wanna go through the tax sale, so they gifted. The land to the select board. And I know, I believe Andy, isn't this like a boilerplate article that? Allows the select board, cause I, it's been there ever since I can remember and it's never changed.
Yeah, yeah. This, this occasionally. Uh. The town will have property, uh, acquired through a tax sale that's, that is not, uh, valuable. For, say, public access to the national forest or any, any other reason. And should more or less lie though. Uh, somebody may, uh, a neighbor typically will, will acquire a tax sale, unbillable. Right, that's why it winds up. At tax sale and not claimed or bid on, bid on. Um. And maybe a neighbor will be interested in it, and they'll come to the select board, gosh, I'd love to buy that piece of property. I found that the town owns it. Uh, and that might spur the select board to take a look at the list of properties that they do own. Uh, and they'll have an option, uh, sealed, uh, usually, uh, for whatever properties they see. You know, uh, uh. A liability as opposed to something they may want to keep for future, uh, access or part, or parting, or whatever. Yeah, and this allows them to hold that option. And they already get that up, get that library off of. Off of the, uh, the town's ownership and back on tax rules and.
Um, hang on one second, you had a comment.
Well, we're, we're talking about the article.
Article sixteen. Article sixteen is, shall the voters authorize the select board to sell properties which a town has acquired by gift or through tax sales? Okay, go ahead.
You know, also the question, Andy mentioned liability, it is also possible that some properties that have been. Or sold to the towns, to the town, however, maybe in a flood zone or in a river corridor, which would make them. Uh, more challenging to build on if they could be built on. So there is a question whether or not there would be a possible theme of buyback or buyout, so there are a couple of other things. That would make a property more challenging to do something with.
Thank you, for our zoning administrator and our floodplain lady. Um, any other questions, comments? It's interesting, we're getting a lot of conversation on that, but we spent five or six million dollars almost at drop of hat. Um. Here's a fun one, shall the voters authorize the select board? To set the tax rates sufficient to cover the approved expenses of the town of Dover and the town of Dover Highway for taxes due on September fifteenth? And February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any questions on that? I think, I think by statute though, you guys have to set the tax rate, it's just the dates that we approve, right? Cause it wouldn't make sense if you couldn't set a tax rate. And then eighteen, shall the voters authorize the select board to borrow money in anticipation of taxes? Does anybody know the last time the town of Dover borrowed money? No, they had borrowed.
I don't, I don't, not since I've been on board.
No, but I, like the town land was very interesting, the town forest, I remember going to vote at the library, Patsy Beam is telling me. Vote no, like, oh, so we're not buying land, she says, no, we don't wanna pay for it all in one shot, we wanna be able to finance it over ten years. I know the firehouse had a bond on it. Um, and there's one other property I remember having a loan on. Can't remember what it was. Okay, so there's another one. I can't think anything else, can any, anybody else that's been around a while? I think they told you they're crazy, I think they just voted against it. No, but that's school, that was a different bond, that's, that, you can throw that back at us and when. And at, at the end of April, in the same building. Okay, so there's nothing else, um, so we have the discussing, the voters would like to discuss and they got any other business may legally come before voters, this is non-binding. But this is where you can raise your hand and be recognized and stand up and say, hey, select board. I can remember times when the select board didn't have a clue, when they got asked a question about a number, they didn't know where it came from. You guys are doing very good, no good deed goes unpunished, but you guys should never be punished, cause you're doing a lot of good deeds. Thank you very much for being there for us.
Uh, I just wanted to give a summary of if everything. In the budget is approved. The, we will be for the first time over six million dollars. As it. For the budget, the town and highway and everything else, and that will be up four point five percent.
And you're gonna print some of those to have people?
You think they're valuable?
I don't know, do you folks, so the, the, the select board actually printed something up, because a lot of times I will get asked. When we start going through appropriations, or what does this mean, you know, to the tax bills? So they printed themselves a cheat sheet, sometimes we printed those to give to people, what do you all think? Give some direction to the select board. Give your thoughts.
I'll have some of it. It's, it basically tells you the up. All the numbers, the, like a summary of the numbers, so that you can, because our town report. It looks like the budget's down, but the budget isn't really down, it's up if we approve everything. Um. So that's why it's kind of, you don't get the full picture, you have to put the numbers together, so.
It's, it just seems that. When people start asking questions, their first question is, what, what are my taxes gonna be?
Which we can't say. Well, we have the school tax, which is gonna be out of this one.
Being, uh, protected for that does not sound, sounds scary.
What's that?
The, the school tax, right? Yeah.
Oh, at least a hundred and fifty percent of. Again, we don't know if, and this is why, and I, I, I would, let me, let's, we can have that conversation in a minute, but. Let's do the, the town stuff, okay, cause it's.
So that, this is, but this is a number that should be pretty concrete for the, for the town, I mean, we hopefully won't. You know, deficit spend next year, but this is unlike the school, and this is what the state has done to us, is make it. Very hard to know what you're really voting for.
On the school side.
Well, and we, even if we vote for it on the school side, that doesn't mean that's what our tax rate is.
No, what I'm saying is, the town side is pretty concrete, because it's only you, you're not getting money from the state, there's not money in, money out, it's not confusing.
What we're voting on is necessarily.
Well, I can't give you the cheat sheet with the school district, which is the biggest part of the taxes. So this is, just, this is what we're responsible for. And our budget's up four point five percent. If everybody votes for everything, if we vote for everything.
Okay, so is everybody good? I, no, I gotta go to Randy and then I'll go to Andy.
And two, whether the grand list has changed. So, I mean, it won't necessarily be for.
If, if we come in with a surplus or. It's, it's a tough year, cause. But we have a better idea than with the.
Much easier. Set? Go ahead, Andy.
Um, so. Ricky, when you say. If we vote yes on everything. Uh. The budget above four point five percent as opposed to the bottom line, the town board is, looks like it went down.
Right.
When you say put yes on everything, are you, does that mean the appropriations in the?
And the capital.
And the capital budgets.
Exactly as they're presented.
All the monetary orders.
So that, that adds, um, you know, the, the capital alone is one point three two million. And then all the appropriations that are warned are three hundred and twenty-two thousand plus a few dollars. So that's another one point six. Um. Four million.
Just to follow, I think that would be super interesting to people that have a hobby that, that time, we have certain big hobbies. That, is that gives people, does understand. Also, an understanding that they have power, that they're exercising power, which is good for time. People wanna show up and do something, and they are doing something.
Any other thoughts or comments on the old cheat sheet? Okay, so, um, I think the last thing is can, um. No, no other comments for the select board than we, if you guys, are you doing other business or you any?
No, we are.
Okay, so if you wanna hear, what I can tell you is, I don't ever get nervous about the school tax rate now, I get nervous about it come April and May. Cause in April and May is when the folks that go up north every year to the Golden Dome. And I say, we say, drink Kool-Aid, um, they tell us what's gonna happen. If you remember a few years ago during COVID, we were looking at almost a double, that we were gonna double the school tax rate. If we had to present a, a budget to the voters in March at town meeting or early in March. And, um, by the time it all sugared out and the yields were set and the tax rates were set and money coming in and money coming out. I think we may even have a slight decrease or it was a slight increase, but it was really darned close. Um, but as Vicki said, the, the big problems are, is it's hard to know exactly, because until they set their, their yields and their rates. You don't know what's gonna happen, and the other part of it is too, is, is we don't know, well, sometimes we don't get real good numbers. We don't know what tuition's gonna be at the schools until sometime around now, we used to have to, if we're gonna have a vote in March, we would have to, you know, guesstimate. And we don't, we can't predict how many students are gonna show up, you know, during COVID, we got killed, because a lot of people all of a sudden were residents. And they're tuitioning their students out, you know, that number's coming down, so we're saving a little money, we're still getting account, but eventually that's gonna, you know, go against us. There's a lot of balls in the air on that, so I definitely, please come to, this year it's in Dover, it's gonna be right here. Um, please come and ask those questions, it's the last Tuesday of April. At, so you'll vote on Monday for school board members. And then the, the, um, and then Monday, uh, Tuesday at seven o'clock, there'll be the school district meeting.
So it's the last week in April?
It's the last Tuesday in April.
Which is the last day of the month.
Is it? Okay, I don't, what's the, the thirty?
Know that that's, uh, April vacation for these schools?
Yeah, you, you will never find a date that isn't something to somebody somewhere.
I'm just telling you.
I, a- again, we, you know, we try to.
A lot of people go on vacation at our schools.
Yeah. Well, I don't know what to say.
That's how we get sneak in, watch emotions.
To the House Ways and Means Committee, not, not every day, my gosh. But, uh, they are looking at. At other ways to. Uh, fund the education piece, uh, whether it's. You know, dividing up the state into districts, like three or four districts, is pretty interesting and. They're all on YouTube, so right after you do the school, the select board meeting, you can look up all the Ways and Means. But, uh, it's, I really learned a lot in the last few months.
Yeah, I mean, we were looking at, we could possibly leverage, just like we did during the, um. Phase in of Act sixty, you know, and a new roof at no cost to the voters, you know, five or six hundred thousand. Um, unfortunately, unlike Act sixty, a lot of other places figured it out quickly. And, um, they advertised it and look what happened, you know, they took it away. Um, so, again, you, you never know what happens until, until, how's it go, the fat lady sings, well, until they, they go home from up north. Um, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen, but we always have a better chance of knowing, we've been able to really nail things, if, those of you that have been going to Dover school. Meetings for years, know that we used to postpone the vote, um, at town meeting. And then we would also, we would come in on the day of, of the meeting, whenever that was, and we'd give you twenty different things we'd ask you to. Okay, we, we found out that there's ten less students that we thought, but we also found out that tuition is going up a little bit, so it's a net cost. So, you know, let's reduce the budget by this amount, so it, it's always a moving target. Um, now that we have a business manager, where before I was doing it along with, um, well, Mary Lou for a while. And then, um. Patty, you know, it, it's, um, it's almost like daily, you know, if you, if you try to figure it out every day. The other thing you all gotta remember too is, I think it's ninety percent, somebody told me the number, just recently in Dover. Um, pay by, um, income, they don't pay by taxes either. Um, so it's, you know, the, the tax rate isn't as important, but. The, the, um, percentage that you pay of your, of your income to taxes for the school side will go up the higher your budget goes up. So, and again, it's really weird, there's been years when schools have cut by their budget. A lot, and their tax rate still goes up, and then there's times you increase your budget a lot and your tax rate goes down, it. Again, it is the craziest thing in the world, and I'm really scared if they wanna separate us up into four qua- uh, four quadrants, you know, or. Or two big districts, you know, every time we move further and further away from you all, from the voters who can put their finger and say. We don't like what you're doing, it gets easier and easier to spend money. Um, Andy and Sarah and I had a conversation too, I, I, and I really think that, you know, the state likes to have ballot votes on school budgets, because. A lot of times those will get turned over, where if we have a, a discussion and somebody can say, you know, you want two million dollars, I think that's too much or too little. You know, but they can say why they're voting no, or why they wanna change it, and we'll walk away with the budget, cause we will make a motion and you guys will decide. The same on the school side, if you just check off a box, it doesn't give these folks any direction on. Are you voting no, cause it was too high, are you voting no, cause it was too low, are you voting no, because you wanted to see them build a new skate park somewhere? They didn't put it in the budget, it's really hard to read, so. That's why I say, I don't think we're gonna be here a lot longer, um, I think eventually things are gonna change a little bit, but, um, it's neat that we can still do this. Yeah. So, hearing that, we've been a little over an hour, it's somebody, oh.
I'd like to join the meeting at seven oh eight.
Thank you, everybody.